Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council regular meeting on Tuesday, August 11th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Public participation in this meeting is available. The public can attend in person or watch and listen to the meeting live on Channel 4, or you can also view the meeting live at LHCaz.gov/TV. Members of the public can submit written comments for the call to the public and the public hearing items by emailing cityclerk@LHCaz.gov. All right, we will now have an invocation from Dr. David Bybee from the Community Presbyterian Church. I believe he's joining us on Zoom. Pastor Bybee, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, great. Thank you for joining us. If you'd like to lead us in the invocation.
Yeah, I want to say I'm glad to be here. I'm always coming to pray. I just happened to be in Michigan, but it works out real well. Okay, let us pray. Almighty God and everlasting Father, we this evening at Lake Havasu City Council come before you, speaking your wisdom and insight during these challenging times in our country. May the actions taken honor you, Lord, and enhance our beautiful community. May Havasu be and continue to be a refreshing oasis in the desert, a place of recharging, and a bright light on the hill. Oh, Lord, please keep us safe during this worldwide virus, and also may we not walk by fear, but with common sense and sound thinking and even joy. Oh, Lord, bless each one here by Zoom or those who are present, and guide our steps as Proverbs 9 says, "We can make our plan, but the Lord determines our steps." In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. And now we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mojave County -- excuse me, Mojave Community College Lake Havasu Campus Dean, Dr. Jan Woods.
My Pledge of Allegiance. I am honored to serve in this profession. I appreciate it. One nation, under God, indivisible, and free of sin.
Thank you, Dr. Woods, for being here. If you would like to share a little bit about your organization in Mojave Community College?
I would. I would. Thank you, Mayor Shihi, members of the City Council for inviting us. Four months ago, as you know, we had to close our campuses because of COVID-19. I have to recognize, applaud, and thank all the faculty and staff who made such a quick response. Faculty to move classes online, our staff working from home to make sure that our students continued -- had continued service, as well as the public had continued service, and those essential folks who agreed to stay on campus to maintain the facility. They did such a marvelous job. This summer, we were able to bring students back to complete the lab work they started in the spring so that they would not miss anything. They could still get their grades and finish the semester successfully. We were able to bring them back, of course, social distancing and masks, et cetera. And those are the students who were in nursing, in welding, air conditioning, our allied health programs, those classes that they could not do online. Of course, we did offer classes online and through video conferencing. The summer, the same thing. All of our classes were online with the exception of those classes that needed them to be in labs and classes where we call -- that we call skill checks. Their skills needed to be checked. I am so pleased to announce we did this this summer without incident at the Lake Havasu City campus, so I am very proud of our staff. Fall semester begins August 24th. We will have classes online and remotely, which means video conferencing. We will still bring students back to complete lab work because that's the only way they're going to be able to do that. So, social distancing, must have a mask, all of that. We've had to move furniture out to make sure the social distancing would be followed. Next year, we celebrate 50 years in Mojave County. Fifty years, and our -- one of our greatest hopes is that next year, we will be able to bring the whole of Lake Havasu City back to the campus to help us celebrate. Many of you know I'm retiring, probably for the third time, I think. But this time, retiring, and my last day is Friday. In July, Dr. Maria Ayon accepted the position of Dean of the Lake Havasu City Campus, and we are thrilled to have her. I know that she will carry on the work we've done. She will lead this campus into the future with energy and vision and innovation. So I would like to introduce to you Dr. Maria Ayon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. I'm really excited to be here. I come to you from Los Angeles, originally from the Central Valley in a little town called McFarland, California. I have over 20 years of experience working in higher education, both in the public universities and colleges, as well as the private universities. I'm really excited to be here. I have a passion for student access, for student equity, and for student success, and those are the values that I base my work ethic on. I'm really excited to join each and every one of you, hopefully soon, and over a cup of coffee, and just learn a little bit more about Lake Havasu City. I am a person that takes initiative and gets involved in the community, so you'll be seeing me around in other venues as well. So thank you for having me here, and I'm really excited.
Yeah, thank you and welcome. Yeah, so again, thank you and welcome, Dr. Maria Ayon. We appreciate you. And Dr. Jan Woods, you know, thank you for all that you've done for Lake Havasu City. It's been phenomenal, and we wish you the best in your third try at retirement, but thank you for everything. And then finally, thank you to Mojave Community College for 50 years of enriching our residents. They put people to work and they have been fantastic partners over those years. So thank you very much, and thanks for being here. All right, we'll move on to the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you'd like to please call the roll.
Councilmembers Jenny Koch.
Here.
Gordon Groth.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Donna McCoy.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
Present.
Vice Mayor David Lane.
Here.
Mayor Cal Shihi.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, before we have the call to public, just as I like to do in these very strange times we're living in now, let the folks at home know what it is we're doing and those that are in the audience. So we are in an in-person meeting here, a regular meeting of the council. We are also meeting our residents and our council and our citizens where they're at with the COVID-19 pandemic, so people can attend the council meeting in person. We ask that you be physically distanced and wear face covering. The council at the dais, we have inserted dividers so that we can have our face covering off when we're actually conducting the meeting, so folks can see us on TV and in the other areas. And then we also allow for councilmembers to zoom in and other people that want to participate to zoom into the meeting. So that is what we're doing, and to make all of this technology happen, we have lots of people to help make that happen for us. So a big thank you to Jerry Bracchamani and to Steve Blake in the back control room for making sure that all of these pieces work for us each time when we can have access to the public during our public process. So thank you very much. And then I'd also like to welcome councilmembers-elect Nancy Campbell and Cameron Moses. Congratulations on the outcome of the election, as well as Vice Mayor David Lane, and welcome and thank you for being here this evening. With that being said, this is the call to public. This is the opportunity where citizens have to address the City Council on any matter within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. We ask that you please keep your comments to three minutes or less. There is a light indicator box that's actually next to our City Clerk, Ms. Williams. Green means you have your three minutes. Yellow means there's one minute remaining, and red means that your time is up for that. You don't have to sign up for the public comments, but we also are receiving public input via email at cityclerk@LHCaz.gov prior to the meeting, and we have not received any for this call to the public. But with that being said, would anyone like to address the City Council during the call to the public? Yeah, please, just make your way to the microphone. If you could please state your name for the record. Sure? Yeah. And then if you could, again, just speak into the microphone and state your name for the record for the clerk.
Rory John Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Watson.
There's an old saying in Tennessee, I know it's a Texas proverb in Tennessee, that says, "Boo, Boo, Boo, shame on you." Shame on you. Boo, we can't fool again.
In 2010, Forbes magazine accurately reported on the WHO's fraudulent response to the smallpox flu. The Parliamentary Assembly of the Council of Europe declared the false pandemic was one of the greatest medicine scandals of the century. By their own rules, a pandemic requires simultaneous epidemics worldwide with enormous numbers of deaths and illness. Eleven weeks into the outbreak, only 144 people died worldwide, and the WHO declared a pandemic. Just one month before, they changed the rules. You could now have a pandemic with zero deaths. When questioned, they claimed the old rule never existed.
Wow, there is some confusion here, and I hope to clarify. Having severe death was never been part of the WHO pandemic.
The WHO Director, Dr. Margaret Chan, then went on to push left-wing politics, the redistribution of wealth for equity and social justice, and claimed that a welfare state is the savior of globalism. Over $18 billion was misallocated on this fake pandemic. In 2005, Dr. Peter Doji published a paper entitled, "Are U.S. Flu Death Figures More PR Than Science?", drawing on data from the CDC. The CDC bundles together influenza and pneumonia and counts them together, which is strange because according to their own data, there are far more deaths caused by pneumonia than the flu. For example, out of the 62,000 pneumonia and influenza deaths from 2001, only 18 cases were lab-confirmed influenza, 0.03%. From 1979 to 2002, there were an average of 58 influenza deaths per year. In 2004, CDC Director Glenn Noack gave a presentation wherein he called upon media to state conservative alarm, predict dire outcomes, and urge influenza vaccination. The new Protection Act of 2005 required the Secretary of Health and Human Services to conduct public influenza awareness campaigns preceding every flu.
Mr. Watson, that was your three minutes. Did you have some comments you wanted to mention?
-- and skyrocket, bringing in billions of dollars to the manufacturing.
That was your three minutes. So if you have a couple of words you'd like to follow up with while you played that this evening?
Yeah.
Into the microphone, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It didn't get quite to the COVID statistics. There were 150,000 supposedly deaths here in the United States, which could have been prevented if we would have went with the hydroxychloroquine. Excuse me, guys, I'm really super nervous. If we would have went with the hydroxychloroquine, 150,000 people could possibly be alive right now. In all your blue dog states, all the mayors and governors sent infected people into the nursing homes to bring up the death rates. Okay, the other 50,000 were just people that could have been saved with the hydroxychloroquine. So what I'm getting at is, had we started out with the hydroxychloroquine in the beginning, we would have not had 150,000 deaths. That's about it.
All right, yeah, thank you for sharing that feedback.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yes. Would anyone else like to address the City Council during the call to the public? Again, we are receiving public comments via email as well at cityclerk@LHCaz.gov, and we have not received any for this call to the public. One last call before we call the call to the public. Seeing none, we'll move on to Item 6, the Consent Agenda. Would any of the councilmembers like to remove any of the items on the consent agenda for separate discussion? No? And entertain a motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Yes.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Councilmember McCoy. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we are ready to vote. Thank you, Mr. Groth.
Motion carries. Seven to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to Item 7 on our agenda, Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. Item 7.1 is the Fiscal Year 2019/203 Third Quarter Contracted Service Agency Reports. I believe Chief Doyle provided those just for our reference. Did any of the councilmembers have any questions? All right, we'll move on to Item 7.2, which has announced vacancies on the Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams.
Mayor and City Council, there are a number of vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Airport Advisory Board, one alternate pilot member. Board of Adjustment, four regular members, three alternate members. And the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one student member. Applications are available at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website at www.LHCaz.gov.
Thank you. Item 7.3 is our City Manager's Report. Mr. Knutson?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to recognize a few of our employees to start the manager's report this evening, starting with Lieutenant Craig Steffick, who will be retiring this month with 21 years of service with Lake Havasu City and two years with the Page PD. Craig has served in a variety of positions, to include patrol, detective, and SWAT, and he was promoted to lieutenant six years ago and has been a valued member of the Department and Command Staff. Craig is taking a position in Phoenix in the private sector as a security director in his retirement. Craig was quoted as saying, "I've truly had a blessed career, being a part of a great department and a great team with the mission of ensuring a safe and secure community, and look forward to the next chapter in my life." Lieutenant Steffick, I thank you for all you did for Lake Havasu City. Alondra Davis-Maori with Public Works Department is also retiring this month after 25 years of service with the city. Alondra has worked solely with the Public Works Department, where she's been instrumental in the department in all capacities that she's filled, and she certainly will be missed. I'm told that she is also well-known for her amazing mashed potatoes and gravy and infamous cheesecakes at the annual Thanksgiving dinners. Alondra was quoted as saying, "I've enjoyed the 25-plus years of service to the Public Works Department and the dedicated, talented people that I was privileged to work alongside. Thank you for the many years of opportunity and for support." Congratulations, Alondra. We wish you a very happy retirement. And although this is not a retirement, we'd like to recognize B.C. Jeff Kemp for his 30 years of service with Lake Havasu City. We're very grateful to our employees and especially those that have served Lake Havasu City for this long. Jeff plans to retire in 2024 with 35 years of service to Lake Havasu City. Jeff unofficially started as a paid on-call firefighter with Lake Havasu City in 1985 before becoming a full-time firefighter in 1990. He said he was truly -- he said he has truly liked working with the city all these years and looks forward to the next five years with the city, and he's added that he really enjoys working where he lives. Congratulations to Jeff, and thank you for your service. Cindy Harvey with Vitalant, thanks to the community for hosting the Blood Drive at the Aquatic Center on July 8th and 9th. She said the Blood Drive, that she's very happy to have a Blood Drive that remains in this time of COVID, and it's truly appreciated. Over the two-day period, they thought they'd see about 115 successful donors and collect about 136 units, but they were surprised by Lake Havasu City when the community came in and with 263 successful donors and 293 units of lifesaving blood units. The next Blood Drive is scheduled for October 27th, 28th, and 29th, and will also be held at the Aquatic Center. Our community is working hard to slow the spread of COVID-19 in our area, and we've seen a significant decrease in positive cases in Lake Havasu City and throughout the county in recent times. Many thanks to all the efforts throughout our community, for everyone in our community for helping to slow the spread. At this time, we remain focused on rapid-response testing for our area, and we continue to work with Mojave County Health Department to provide expanded testing options for our community. You can find a list of available testing site options on the city's website at LHCaz.gov/Covid-19. The turnaround time for test results from the state labs should start to be returned more quickly with the additional equipment provided to the labs by the state and by order of Governor Doug Ducey. Based on the latest phase reopening plan for POSD Industries from Governor Ducey's office, Arizona, including Mojave County, is listed in the substantial transmission phase in that chart you see on the top there. Meaning, upon this initial two-week review, Arizona Department of Health Services advises keeping operations that are considered high-risk of spreading COVID-19, specifically gyms and fitness centers, bars and nightclubs, water parks, and tubing operations. Movie theaters for all these operations remain closed, and to continue limiting indoor and outdoor gatherings to no more than 50 people, and this will be reviewed by the governor every two weeks. Upon reopening, all industries must implement the safety protocols and guidelines described by the Arizona Department of Health Services and must have documentation stating that they are in compliance. Arizona Department of Health Services provides metrics and a dashboard for industry leaders and businesses to understand when a general reopening could be considered. It's located on their website at azdh.gov. On that website, the public can click on the COVID dashboard and then click on Mojave County on the map to track the positive rate, positivity rate, which is used to determine when gyms and bars can safely reopen, albeit at a lesser capacity. We all have an important role in slowing the spread of disease in our areas. The actions we can take now makes a difference and brings us closer to reduce the cases in our region. Wash your hands, disinfect touched objects and surfaces frequently, cover your cough or sneeze, wear masks and face covering, physically distance yourselves, avoid large gatherings, and stay home when you're sick. Mayor and Council, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. All right, we'll move on to Item 8 of our agenda, which is our public hearings. We'll start with Item 8.1, Discussion and Possible Action if Necessary to Comply with Open Meeting Law Following the Executive Session Regarding Negotiations for the Purchase of Real Property Located at 92 Akoma Boulevard. Mr. Knutson, do I send that over to you?
Sure. Good evening, Council and Mayor. The action here, Item 8.1, is for council's consideration, is the purchase of the property located at 92 Akoma Boulevard. The intent here was for the city to purchase this property for the intention of a future courthouse. So as you, as we know, the existing situation with the city is we are a tenant over at the county courthouse located off College Street. There was a longstanding relationship with Mojave County and Lake Havasu City where we had consolidated court operations. The deconsolidation of the courts occurred just in the last couple of years. So at present time, we lease that space as a city municipal court from Mojave County. We are experiencing some pains in terms of growth within that existing facility. It's been difficult to schedule courtrooms at certain times, and we see expanded growth, and so the need to find an additional facility has been identified by the council through the CIP and at our annual retreats. So that's something that the council's identified as a priority and has charged me with looking at options for Lake Havasu City. This opportunity presented itself just a few months ago. It is a unique situation because this is a property that's directly adjacent to the existing City Hall complex. So the property itself is, in my mind, a valuable location. It would allow for the expansion of the existing city campus, not just immediately upon purchase, but to set the city up for future generations and be able to identify additional facilities over the long term to host city services for our residents. And the CIP that was adopted by council, we identified in years two, three, and four for a courthouse to be constructed on the City Hall complex. We identified a cost in that CIP of $7.5 million in relation to this deal and the offer that's on the table for council consideration is the purchase price of 92 Akoma for $3 million. It'd be a down payment of $2 million, and then over the course of the next couple of years, the balance of that, those dollars, will be paid. It is the recommendation of city staff that the initial down payment for $2 million would come out of the CARES Act funding that was identified in the last couple of months, out of the, from the 6.4. The court operations is a public safety component, and although the city has the ability to spend those dollars in other areas, that was some of the conversations when that number was first identified. If the property is purchased by the city, depending when the start date happens, it'll take about 24 months for the design and construction or the renovation of that facility to take place. Right now, we do not have dollars budgeted. We have dollars available, but we do not have dollars budgeted in this existing budget for those renovations. If the council so wishes, we can move forward that schedule. Otherwise, we wait till July 1st of next year, the next budget cycle. Regardless of where we start, if it's this fiscal year or July 1st of next fiscal year, it'll take about 24 months for design and renovations to take place. Again, this is a purchase price that you see is for $3 million. That includes the property. It also includes the contents of the building, and that was a request coming from the sellers. So I've appreciated both Dale and Jack Bailey for all their efforts, and at this time, that concludes my update. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address that.
Thank you for Mr. Knutson. Do any members of the council have any comments or questions?
I'll just, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'll just jump in. Like I said, I've been a big proponent of the courthouse maybe moving a little bit quicker than what we had projected. You know, seven and a half million, of course, was more than we originally thought was the $3 million price that we learned at the, I believe, at the last budget we discussed that. You know, keep in mind, we're also for, we were planning that $7 million was to put it on the lot, I believe, behind the police station, which is a property that we already own. This $3 million also includes the land. I think it's definitely a pretty good deal. I'd also like to see us, you know, when we do get it, also keep the ball moving. I think it's a very important aspect of public safety. I think we're also addressing that issue with the salaries issues with fixing the police department is an example of some of the, some of that budgeting. I'm definitely for it. I know the time is not, timing is never perfect in many situations, but like I said, I think it's definitely a win-win for the city. I know when I was campaigning a few years ago, I spent some time at the courthouse, asking a lot of questions, trying to understand the whole deconsolidation, and it's a building we shared for quite a while that we, as two government entities, started to outgrow, and the fact that we lease it from them, we don't own it. We were the one that, I believe, got pushed out. Like I said, it's definitely, I believe, the time that we need to transition into, and I'm just excited for the possibility, so I'm on board.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Koch?
I'd just like to point out as well, I think we've been talking about this courthouse and some of our growing pains at our current location for a majority of the years that I've been on council, at our retreats, and what opportunities and what was our focus going to be. This last year at our council retreat, we identified two major issues that we wanted to address this year, and obviously, these were before COVID came into play, but our salary issues as well as the courthouse were the top two priorities that came out of that. We've got an opportunity to stop kicking the can down the road and to take care of a problem that's been a problem and an issue for us. The property is strategically located, which is perfect for us for future expansion and growth needs. Ideal timing, absolutely not, but we've got to look forward to the future and to the city and where we're going, and I think we've all seen what the housing market is doing. We're definitely getting more people moving here, which is going to mean all of our services are going to be expanding. So I think the opportunity with the pricing and the location, we need to probably take this into real consideration as an opportunity we probably won't get again, so.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lane?
Yes, thank you, sir. This kind of just fell into our lap, and you know, everybody that has heard me speak, you know, don't step over a dollar to save a dime. And I try to be very fiscally conservative. This is bad timing. We don't know what the future holds. However, we do know that in the future, we are going to need this facility, and while And by a stroke of unfortunate circumstances for one of our business owners, this property became available, and I wish them all the best, but it is good for the taxpayers because we are going to be able to save several million dollars by accessing a building that is adjacent to the current building. And so I wish them well in their endeavors, but as I said, being the conservative person that I am, saving over $3 million going into the future, and that's the one thing we know about the future, is we are going to need this space. So I just throw my support behind this.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so a couple of, just as a way of education for folks, the courthouse itself is a place where people go for court actions, but it also takes the folks from our prosecutor's office and our city attorney's office, which is located here already. So we'll have some synergies with the prosecution staff already being on this campus. Currently, we have one courtroom, access to one courtroom. We have four judges, so you can see how difficult that could be for that. So then obviously, the synergies of us being so close to it. So tonight, what we're talking about is the purchase of the real property, but we also would have tenant improvements. And even with the tenant improvements, to be able to make that work for a courtroom, excuse me, a courthouse environment, as Vice Mayor Lane said, we'll be saving millions of dollars based on just what we approved in a budget just a month and a half ago in June. So this is a win-win for the taxpayer, creates a good opportunity that's just adjacent to City Hall. And out of all the options that we've looked at, we've looked at existing buildings, we've looked at leasing buildings, building buildings, building buildings on the campus, all sorts of things. This is the best opportunity, and as Vice Mayor Lane said, it just came to us at one point. So it's a great opportunity with the best interest of our taxpayers in mind and the most fiscally responsible solution that's been presented or even offered in this way. So. Any other council members have any comments before we open the public hearing? Yes, Councilmember Lynn?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can you just touch base, either you or our city manager, on the future savings of the purchase of this building, what that's going to look like regarding, instead of leasing and owning, could you touch base on that with those numbers a little bit?
Sure. I'll talk a little bit about the deconsolidation, Jess, and if you want to talk about the savings. So how we got here, that's probably always a good thing. Sometimes we get so deep into the work we're doing that we forget to remind how we got here. The county and the city consolidated the court systems about 25, 26 years ago. So that's the municipal court, which is what the city's responsible for doing, and then there's the justice court and the superior court, all using the same complex in a consolidated manner, which at the time, Lake Havasu City's population was probably in the 30,000 range. So it made a lot of sense to pool our monies together, pool our resources together, pool our staff resources together, to be able to conduct the services that each of those different court jurisdictions handle. As the city continued to grow, space constraints became real with access to courtrooms, and the county decided that deconsolidation would be the best option for them. And so deconsolidation basically means we unravel all of that, and in August of last year, Lake Havasu City became a tenant of the county in this facility. And deconsolidation occurred as of August 31st of last year. So that puts us where now we're a tenant, and as the space needs for the county increase, and they'll increase as caseloads increase, our security of having a courtroom or a court space are limited. And courtrooms are not something that we could just go rent a vacant storefront tomorrow. There's requirements for safety and security and inmate transport and all these different things that have to be taken into account, and so we need to be on the front end and be prepared rather than being reactive if that were to happen. Now, Mr. Knutson, if you wanted to share a little bit about the financial piece?
Sure. So the city right now, again, we're a tenant of the county for the existing facility. So now, the exact maintenance costs are to be determined. We have to go through a design phase, or there's some things that we have to make a decision on. We have the ability, if we want to, we'll have to look at the price and the options that are out there to add a second floor within the existing structure, so not on top of the structure, but within the structure, because you're looking at existing building that's a shell with very, very high ceilings. So the exact maintenance costs are yet to be determined, but we can do that through the design. But we're confident that the existing costs that the city pays to be a tenant will exceed what the maintenance costs will be for the new facility. So whether we're looking at maybe $40,000, $60,000, somewhere in that ballpark, that would certainly be an ideal situation. But it's yet to be determined, but we'll make some design decisions that'll lessen some of that electrical output and some of the other costs that are tied to a maintenance of the facility.
Yeah, so again, a $40,000 to $60,000 annual savings from what we're paying now outside of any debt service-related costs would be realized by this purchase from an operations standpoint. So great question. Thank you. Councilmember Lynn? Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
I'd just like to add to it. This is the next step to the deconsolidation that we did earlier, and a lot of these questions did come up. I remember looking into it, and I think it's, there's a lot of moving pieces to this. I think a very interesting fact, if city attorney Kelly Gary is available, just a quick question. For example, if I was charged and found guilty and pleaded to being too good-looking for city council, and I pleaded guilty today, how long would it be before I'd be able to be sentenced? Just as a hypothetical.
I don't know if I can directly answer your hypothetical, but we recently were offering plea agreements to defendants, and they need to go to their judgment and sentencing hearing. That's not being scheduled until December.
Okay. That was, that's just, I think, a perspective on just one example of how it is out there, that we don't have the spacing, we don't have the courtroom spacing, and that's just one aspect that I think is suffering of our public safety. So just thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember McCoy?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just want to echo what everyone else has said, that I think this is a great opportunity that has fallen into our lap, unfortunately for bad reasons, but it's one of those things that we were looking to do in the future. We're going to save money by stepping onto it now, so I think it's one of those things. And I definitely have to concur with Councilmember Dolan. You're just too handsome for this city.
Yeah. The other thing with the courthouse is that we've had some really great successes in our Veterans Treatment Court, and there's other courts that are similar, that are specialty courts or treatment courts, that are for different avenues or different pathways that we could even look at, but right now, we don't have the space to do that. If we were to do that, there's additional operational costs that we'd have to have the discussion about, but this also gives the pathway for those discussions to even happen, and those are long-term cost savings to public safety from repeat offenders and attorney time and police officers and the court time. I did see that Judge Kalali has joined us on Zoom. I don't mean to put you on the spot, Judge, but I don't know if you have any comments that you'd like to make.
Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. First of all, I want to say to Jack and Dale how much I've appreciated their support in the community. They've been fantastic community members, and I am sorry to see Havasu Fitness go. I really appreciate it, all that they've done, and wish them the best and hope that their retirement is a good one and one that keeps them here in Lake Havasu. And if they ever get bored, they can always come and see me. I'm sure we can put them to work in youth or veterans courts, and so I really want to thank them for being such great members of the community. And Mayor, I guess my comment would be that as a council, you folks have been working on this for five years. I think five years ago is when we had been asked to say, to present to the council, what would our, what would our facilities look like at 92,000 people? And we had presented that then, that we would need a larger facility, and you folks have been working since then to really make that happen, and I appreciate it all that you folks have done. If this happens, I think it is a perfect place for the court to be, and it will allow, like you said, Mayor, us to be able to provide better services to our community and do some of the things in other areas that we've had great success in, including veterans court and youth court. And so the court is ready to move forward as soon as the council says, and I really appreciate all that you folks have done. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Judge. All right. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Yeah, please. Mr. Watson, just make your way to the podium. Again, I know your name, but state it one the last time for the record for the clerk.
Can you guarantee that our taxes will not go up by purchasing this land?
Yeah, right now, we're not talking about a tax increase to purchase this land. This is, these are available funds that are in our current adopted budget, so.
You have, you say the city has property behind the police department? Have you considered maybe selling that off to purchase this building over here?
It's a parcel that's adjacent to the police department, so that wouldn't be a parcel that would be available. That would be for future growth on this City Hall complex. That's paid-off property. That's basically, your car might even be parked in it right now, and then there's a grass area that's adjacent to the parking lot.
So the answer is no?
No. Yeah, that would not be strategic to, to be short-sighted to sell a parcel of property today when people of Lake Havasu City's future in 50 years are going to need services that would make sense to appear on this complex.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Watson. Would anyone else like to address city council on this matter? All right, again, we are accepting public comment via email at cityclerk@LHCaz.gov, and we did not receive any emails prior to this meeting for this agenda item. With no one in the audience looking to want to speak, a call to the public. I'll now close the public hearing and bring it back to council, and I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
I'd like to entertain a motion. Don't have a suggested motion. Do we, I wasn't sure how we want to phrase this for.
Oh, do you want to make a motion?
I'll let Vice Mayor Lane.
Vice Mayor Lane, okay. Yeah. So Vice Mayor Lane, you want to?
I don't mind handing it to you. So we can make sure we're doing this all legal, the way it's supposed to be done. So, a motion?
Please.
I move to instruct the city manager to finalize negotiations for the purchase of real property located at 92 Akoma Boulevard and authorize the city manager to execute a purchase agreement and other documents necessary to purchase the property as discussed in executive session.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? And so what everyone just saw right there with that transaction is the conversation we had, that's why the meeting started just a few minutes late, is we were just wrapping up an executive session that we can talk about detailed negotiations that Mr. Knutson provided, so the suggested motion was prepared right after that conversation happened. So, all right, we are ready to vote. Thank you, Mr. Groth.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item 8.2 is adopt resolution number 20-3428, appointing a student member to the Lake Havasu City Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, the city received one application requesting consideration as a student member to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. This appointment is necessary to fill a current vacancy of a student member position with a term to expire June 30th, 2022. Mr. Chad Adams was not able to be here tonight to the meeting, but his application is provided to you in the packet, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Do any members of the council have any initial questions for Ms. Williams? Yeah, this just follows the trend that we've been having over the last 30 to 45 days with just strong interest from folks. This youth position is always a difficult one to fill, so we're excited to have an applicant so quick to when we were having such high demand for those. So thank you to Chad for applying. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none in the local audience, we also are accepting public hearing or public comment via email at cityclerk@LHCaz.gov, and we did not receive any public comments for this item. I'll now close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember McCoy?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to adopt resolution number 20-3428, appointing Chad Adams as a student member to the Lake Havasu City Park and Recreation Advisory Board with a term ending June 30th, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember McCoy and a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Thank you, Councilmember Groth.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, and congratulations to Mr. Chad Adams. Welcome to the board. Moving on to item 8.3 is adopt ordinance number 20-1237, amending Lake Havasu City Code Title 14, zoning development code, section 14.03.03(c)(17(c)(3), medical marijuana business operation to revise allowable hours of operation. Mr. Schmeling, are you going to be taking that?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. The item before you is an ordinance to amend the development code regarding hours of operation for medical marijuana dispensaries. Staff received the request from Harvest Health and Recreation to change the hours of operation to allow them to open until 10:00 p.m. Currently, the code limits the hours of operation for a dispensary from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The Arizona Administrative Code allows dispensaries to operate throughout the state from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Based on our research, staff recommended mirroring the Arizona Administrative Code, changing the hours of operation to 7:00 a.m., between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. The commission voted six to one to adopt the item, and I also have Lauren Nihas on this Zoom call representing Harvest Health, who has a short presentation for you. But that concludes my portion of the presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Schmeling. Any initial questions before the applicant gives a presentation? All right, we'll turn it over to the applicant. Hi.
Hi there. Thank you guys for having me. My name is Lauren Nihas. I'm the Government Relations Specialist for Harvest Health and Recreation. Mayor Sheehy and city council members, I want to thank you for entertaining this virtual option. I know it's becoming a lot more normal, whereas Harvest is based in Arizona, I'm in Colorado. But I look forward to the days where I can get back to Lake Havasu, where I went many a times as a child to meet you all in person and also experience Lake Havasu again. I have a very brief presentation for you, so I will share my screen. Can you all see that okay?
Yes.
Great. I want to thank city staff and the planning commission for making this an extremely efficient process. We do things with lots of cities, and that's not always the case, so I do appreciate the efficiency in which this city runs. You guys have done a great job. For those of you who may not be familiar with Harvest, Harvest Health and Recreation is a multi-state cannabis operator based here in Arizona. Our headquarters is up in Tempe. In Arizona, we currently have 15 operating retail stores, including Harvest of Lake When we operate in any city, especially Lake Havasu City, our goal is not to be the best dispensary in the city, but we want to be one of the best business partners in the city, one who offers solid employment opportunities, gives back to the community, and helps drive economic development and growth in the city. Here is our location. This was previously another operator we acquired back in 2017 over on 1691 Industrial Boulevard, and our current hours of operation are Sunday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. In terms of the proposed changes, we are looking to, as Mr. Schmeling discussed, change this to be in line with Arizona Administrative Code. Whereas I can't guarantee we'll open at 7:00 a.m., our intent is to close later, closing at 10:00 p.m. So extending these hours will allow for both increased access for our retail employees to earn wages, for our patients to shop inside of the store, and for increased revenue, the city and those additional operating hours. We have had a pretty good stream of customers asking if this is a possibility for the future, hence why I am here in front of you. So I've laid out the hours of operation at a number of other cities where Harvest operates throughout the state, and you can see the trend that a number of jurisdictions are going towards adopting what the Arizona Administrative Code is and having their operators, rough, excuse me, operating hours extended until 10:00 p.m. I'm currently working on this process with Avondale and Scottsdale. We just finished up with Tempe, so everybody seems to be trying to align with state law to make things a little bit more simple for employees, patients, customers, and city. When I talk about extending hours later into the evening especially, folks often have questions about the security of operating later into the evening. We have been working and will continue to work hand in glove with Lake Havasu City Police Department. I'm pleased to report that other than a couple of false alarm triggers, we have not had any calls that necessitate increased police presence at this location. As you may be aware, our facility has secured entrances. As you may be aware, our facility has secured entrances. We have strict age verification techniques to ensure that only those age appropriate and medical marijuana license holders are able to access the store. We have lighting to prevent loitering, and this location is monitored with 24/7 surveillance. Finally, on the security front, the city of Tempe did a study a while back looking at liquor stores, pharmacies, or convenience stores and dispensaries/cultivation facilities. During their study period, they found that for the 60 crimes they're seeing around a dispensary, they're seeing a disproportionately high amount of crimes around liquor stores and around pharmacies. This in large part has to do with the security measures that dispensaries are required to have in place with lighting and security fees. So we feel confident that having an extra two hours in Lake Havasu City will not create any sort of public safety burden or burden to the local police department during those extra hours. And with that, we look forward to continuing our partnership with Lake Havasu City. I will make myself available to answer any questions you may have. And again, thank you for the opportunity to be here with you. I will stop sharing the screen.
Excellent, thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions? Councilmember McCoy?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question, but I was wondering if I could ask Chief Dan Doyle, how do you feel about the extended hours? Do you think there's any reason for concern? And I'd just like to hear from you.
Mayor, council. So, yeah, I don't anticipate that it's going to cause any more calls for service there at that location. We've not had any significant issues there other than alarm calls, so there's no statistics here that would indicate that there will be more crime or any issues there.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions or comments from council before we open up the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? All right, there are no comments from the in-person attendance. And again, we are receiving public comment from via email at cityclerk@lhcaz.gov, and we did not receive any public input on this. So I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council. And just remind that the action here came to us with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, six to one, to update our code to mirror what state law is. And that that's the action that's before us. I would entertain a motion unless any council members have any additional comments or questions. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move to adopt ordinance number 20-1237, amending Lake Havasu City Code Section 14.03.03(c)(17(c)(3), medical marijuana business operation to revise allowable hours of operation.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember McCoy. Any final comments? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Grow.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Mayor, council. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Item 8.4 is adopt resolution number 20-3420, approving the wireless communications facility standard, terms and conditions, and design standards, concepts, and requirements for wireless facilities in the right of way. Mr. Kozlowski.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This is for the adoption of design standards and terms and conditions for small cell wireless facilities as required by state statute. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Excellent, are there any questions of the council? Initial questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could, Mr. Kozlowski, could you talk to us, talk to us about what 5G is and why we're, why we're doing this? What the, why it's necessary?
Sure. Due to the state passing legislation back in 2018 that required cities and towns across the state to adopt design standards for new 5G cells, which are placed in the right of way to help increase 5G communication across the state.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add?
Yeah.
So 5G is a technology that came out several years ago, and at that time, we had several cities that adopted a process. With the, as Mr. Kozlowski indicated, state statutes provide for the cell companies to come in and install 5G type of equipment within the community without any recourse or response from the city unless you have a proper process in place. So what you have is, in some cases, although the technology is changing, you have a process where you have pieces of equipment that can range in size from a small pizza box to a large trash can that are located on several poles or streetlights throughout the, throughout the community. So we want to make sure we put something in place that if somebody comes in and wants to introduce that type of technology, although in Havasu, we don't have many streetlights. We don't may have many stoplights or other types of poles, but we do want to put a process in place that allows us to react to an application if it does come towards the city.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Knudsen. Yeah, this has been a while. The city staff has been working on this, so it's good to bring this forward so that we can get in front of the first applicant, so. All right, any other questions or comments before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing none from those in public attendance. Again, we also are receiving public feedback via email at cityclerk@lhcaz.gov, and we did not receive any written comments on this, actually, on this agenda item this evening. Bring it back and close the public hearing? Yes?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to adopt resolution number 20-3420, approving the wireless facility standard, terms and conditions, and the design standards, concepts, and requirements for wireless facilities in right of way.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Councilmember McCoy. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Grow.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.5 is approve the statement of work with Camtra Technologies LLC for Oracle Cloud Human Capital Management Time and Labor, Payroll, and Enterprise Resource Planning Support. Ms. Olson?
Thank you, Mayor. This item before council this evening is a statement of work with Camtra Technologies. Their specialty is providing technical assistance with the Oracle Fusion product that the city purchased a couple of years ago and are currently implementing. Staff has come to the realization that we need more time and expertise than what we have in-house to assist with final implementation challenges that we're having and troubleshooting. And Camtra has shown that they are very valuable in helping us particularly with our payroll issues. This would allow us a six-month contract for about 100 hours per month with Camtra for them to provide that technical expertise we need for payroll, any report generation that we might require, and the improvements on workflow issues related to the Oracle software and additional per set of work projects in the system. This would allow us to have six months' worth of work. Staff would probably need help beyond that, but we want to measure and grade, so to speak, the services that we receive over this next six months. So far, Camtra has proven to be very affordable and very effective in helping us address some issues and get some things corrected. One thing that I'll give council, just kind of a for-your-information item, we will be bringing another statement of work before you with Camtra because we've found that they provided a very reasonably priced quote associated with the implementation of the positional analysis. And we would like to get them involved in that so that we can implement that with the earliest effective date possible. So that, you will see it next meeting, but I did want to let you know that it is coming. But for this evening, this is just to prove the six-month contract with Camtra for about 100 hours of work. The amount would not exceed $54,000. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Do any members of the council have any initial questions? So again, this is a company that is helping with the implementation of Oracle. Oracle has obviously provide or proven to give our city staff a lot of challenges since it's been implemented. And Camtra seems to be a good solution for the small amount of work that they've done for us. Outside of, there was another firm. Ms. Olson, what was the firm we are?
Cherry Road Technologies currently has our maintenance agreement.
Yeah, thank you. So we've adopted Cherry Road agreements in the past, and when you're too much of a blockade, we just move you out of the way, and Camtra seems to be the one to do that, so. And especially with the increase of the positional analysis based on council's direction, as Ms. Olson mentioned, an item coming forward in our next meeting so that we can make sure that happens and give staff the resources and the tools they need to be able to implement that at the pace in which we direct it, so. Any comments or questions before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Yes, Councilmember Grow? Yes?
I do want to make a comment to the item. Having been here since the beginning of this decision process and the implementation, and having worked with Oracle and M4 deployments before, the, it's very normal for these deployments to take quite a while when you're moving from the sort of IT infrastructure we did have to what is more, more accurately called a very large IT infrastructure, something that approaches a Fortune 500 company level of IT infrastructure. So there's always going to be these pain points, and the expertise that you need to solve the pain points to make the system really operate effectively. You know, these things take a couple of years before they get done, but typically, that expertise does not reside in an organization as small as the city of Lake Havasu. A good DBA would be earning more than our city manager, for example. The people who can write the Flex SQL code to create customized reports that we would need in certain areas, even though we get modules, we, every municipality, every corporation requires these specific changes. So having this contract in place allows our IT, the staff, if you will, and Ms. Olson, the ability to guide those final finishing touches into place, and that will provide cost savings to the organization for many, many years into the future as you have a very large and robust system finally implemented. And then the other piece I wanted to say was, for all the staff who have worked with this, I know that there are always pain points in these deployments, but at some point, that all becomes very, very nice. So I'm going to support this. I think it's very important that we get over the final mile on this and get this whole system running very quickly.
Thank you. All right, again, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing none with those in attendance here. Again, we are accepting public comment and public input via email at cityclerk@lhcaz.gov, and we did not receive any public input on this item. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor Lane?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to approve the statement of work with Camtra Technologies LLC in an amount not to exceed $54,000.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we are ready to vote.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Grow.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, item 8.6 is the positional analysis update. Ms. Rula?
Evening, thank you, Mayor. I am going to be introducing you all to Anne Antonson. She is the director, a director with Baker Tilly, which is the consulting company that has been working on our positional analysis since last year. So I will turn it over to Anne, and she will give you a report on where we're at with positional analysis.
Great, thank you. Anne, if you could just unmute your line. There you are, yes.
Great, too many buttons. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you for bringing this to the meeting this evening. Myself and your staff have been working very hard on this project for the last many months on this. We were making great progress, and then this wonderful thing called COVID hit, and we got slowed down a little bit, but we're here to present findings to you this evening. I do have a presentation that I will share with my, on my screen. Sean, does everybody have a copy of the report as well? Okay, she must not have heard me.
No, I'm sorry, I lost, I lost my screen there for a second when you shared.
Okay.
I pulled a copy of the report over to Jess. I don't know if it made its way over to the council members at this point.
Okay. All right, well, if you don't have a copy of the report after the presentation, when you do get a copy of the report, I will be referring to a couple of pieces in the report during this presentation. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen now. Maybe? All right, can you see the presentation?
All right, but I believe we might need to unpin our video on our end, if we could do that in the control room. And then, Anne, if you could?
Let me know when.
Yeah, if you could try one more time to show your screen.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, it's starting. Okay, now we have your screen.
Okay, so you have the slideshow?
Yes.
Okay, great, all righty. So I'll just jump right in on this. So as Sean said, we started working on this project last year, and it's been a very involved process. And so tonight, I'd like to walk through the objectives that were presented as we started this study, the methodology that we used for conducting the study, and then walk you through the different phases and then some recommendations as well. So the objectives that were identified at the beginning of the study was to do a very comprehensive review and evaluation of the city's current classification and compensation system. A comprehensive review has not been done in a very long time, and so the city was facing some issues that they felt could be addressed by doing a very thorough review of all of the components that come along with a classification and compensation system. And that's looking at job descriptions, reviewing internal equity, doing a comprehensive market survey, and then making recommendations for a compensation strategy and structure and implementation options for the city. So as a part of that, you know, we wanted to make sure that we had opportunities for input at all levels of the organization. That meant from the city manager to department heads to all of the staff within the organization. So we really wanted to ensure that we had that level of participation. And then as a part of the process was to develop up-to-date job descriptions, so making sure that we had outlined the current essential functions that were required of every position, the current job requirements as far as education, experience, knowledge, skills, and abilities, and any other special requirements for every position. And then looking at the big question that everybody always asks is, what is the current relationship of the city's wages and benefits in comparison to the marketplace? Are you high? Are you low? Are you consistent with the market? Typically, we find is that- Typically, we find is that there's a mixture of a little bit of everything when we do that very comprehensive review. And then, as I said earlier, evaluating the internal ranking of positions. And with that, we want to ensure that positions within the city that have similar levels of responsibility and essential job functions that they're required to perform, similar levels of job requirements as far as knowledge, skills and abilities and education and minimum requirements, that those positions are compensated at a level that's similar to one another within the organization. And then taking that information, the market information, the internal relationships of positions within the organization, and developing a compensation system and strategy along with implementation options and strategies for the city to move forward as well. So the methodology that we used for conducting this study, we had discussions with the city manager, many conversations with human resources. We had a meeting with department heads initially on site as we started this project. And the goal with that was to share information with them about the study, have a conversation about any issues or concerns that they had that they wanted to address throughout the course of the study, their responsibility as we move through the study and answer any questions that they had as a part of the study. We also had every department head complete a questionnaire. When we do these studies, we like to be very, become very familiar with the workings of each individual client. So for each department head, we wanted information about how their department was structured, the positions, the number of staff, the recording relationships within their department, an overview of the level and types of services that they were providing. Was there anything unique that we typically wouldn't find in some other communities as we're reviewing their structures and their services? Any issues or concerns that they had with recruitment or retention of employees in any position, positions that had a high rate of turnover, any positions that they had that had special requirements or qualifications that were necessary, their feedback on organizations that should be included in the market survey. So organizations that maybe were similar in their services, similar in their service areas, similar in size, similar in the structure and those types of things. So that we made sure that we were getting appropriate comparisons out in the marketplace. So it was a very extensive questionnaire so that it really allowed us to become familiar with the operations in Lake Havasu City. So the next piece of that was then getting input from employees. So we had employees in every position complete a position analysis questionnaire that provided us information about the job duties they're required to perform, the job requirements and other factors that apply to their job. So employees completed those. They were then submitted to supervisors to provide feedback to make sure we had comprehensive information about every position in order to develop job descriptions, in order to collect our market survey data, and in order to evaluate positions in relationship to one another within the organizations. So we use that information for several different phases, the development of the job descriptions. A summary of each position was included in the market survey to make sure we got valid comparisons out in the marketplace. And it was used for evaluating, as I said, that internal equity of positions. So it was a very useful tool that we used every phase of this study. So we collected our market survey data, we did the internal evaluation, and we use that information to develop compensation plans that we are presenting to you this evening. We then assigned positions within that overall compensation plan and then looked at developing implementation options. So where did individual employees fit within that compensation structure? So in our market survey, we had ten marked benchmark communities which were asked to participate in the survey. We sent them a questionnaire about benchmark positions to collect minimum, maximum and actual salaries and other information regarding compensation plans and structures and also a very extensive benefit survey. So these were the ten that were we connected with to attempt to collect data. We were able to collect the data from eight of the ten participants. It did take multiple contacts, both by our staff and city staff, to collect the data from these organizations that were selected to be benchmarks. The city of Goodyear and the city of Prescott, despite multiple contacts and despite looking at their websites to try and collect the data, we were unable to collect any wage or benefit information from them. So we had eight participants in our survey. In our survey, we had eighty-three positions that were included in the initial survey to collect market survey wage data. In the final analysis, we used seventy-two of those positions. So we had eleven positions which were excluded from the final analysis either because there was insufficient data, so one or two, sometimes three responses, or the data was, it was not comparable to the position in Lake Havasu City and they were not consistent with the information provided by other respondents. So it was not deemed to be valid, so we took it out of the final analysis and the development of the compensation plan. So when we look at salary ranges, so we had minimum, midpoint and maximum wages, which we compared to the wages in Lake Havasu City. And on average, your salary ranges are slightly below market. We had some that were fairly consistent with market, some that fell further below, a few that fell slightly above. But on average, your salary ranges are slightly below. So your minimum salaries are just under five percent below, your midpoint salaries just over five percent below, and your maximum salaries are five point six percent below average. And when you have the opportunity to review the final report, there's detailed information on all of the salary information in appendix two of that report. Then, in addition to the market survey data, we also looked at internal equity. And looking at internal relationships is very important within an organization. Not always will you have valid survey information for a position. So how do you determine where that position should fall within your compensation plan? And that's based on its relationship to similar positions within the organization. And so we use job evaluation, which is a very standard compensation practice in both public and private sector organizations worldwide. The system that we use for evaluated positions is the systematic analysis and factor evaluation system, or SAFE system. This is a system that was developed specifically for use in the public sector. It's copyrighted, it's been tested in federal courts under an EEOC claim and been found to be an equitable system for reviewing the relationships with positions within an organization. It's also been accepted in the state of Minnesota under their local government pay equity act. So it's a very comprehensive, user-friendly system for organizations to use, not only upon initial development of compensation plan, but it's also something that the city can use moving forward. If positions change or positions are created, the city would have the ability to evaluate those positions using the SAFE system and determine where those should be placed within the compensation plan. So there are nine factors included in the SAFE job evaluation system, a training and ability, which includes both formal education as well as any special requirements. So a wastewater license, for example, which takes significant training and testing, but does not result in a degree, that is a component of this factor. The prior work experience that is required to be hired into the position within the city. The level of work, so of the type of work being performed, is it entry level on up to management level of the type of work? Human relation skills, responsibility of working with or through others, both within and outside the organization. And then what's the frequency and what's the purpose of those communications? Physical demands required of the position, a working condition, which includes both physical and environmental hazards that an employee may face. It also looks at the level of mental effort or stress that is required of the position. How independently the position is allowed or required to function, so the level of supervision received in a position. Impact on end result, types of decisions that are required to be made, types of actions that are required to be taken. What's the level of consequences to the organization? And then supervisory responsibilities of the position. And so all this is based on the minimum requirement of the position. What does it take to be hired, not on the qualifications of any individual employee within the city? So then we looked at pay philosophy as we were developing the overall compensation program. And the pay philosophy looked at making sure we're providing fair and equitable compensation levels to all employees within the organization, balancing external, so the market information with the internal relationship of positions within the city, looking at developing a competitive wage structure that also takes into consideration the city's financial resources that you have available, not only for implementing, but for maintaining and sustaining the system moving forward. Ensuring pay rates moving forward are based on individual employee performance for movement through the pay range as well as cost of living components for that movement as well. And then making sure it's an understandable compensation program for all the stakeholders, employees, elected officials, department heads, administration, et cetera. So when we developed the compensation plan, and this is a little bit hard to see on a PowerPoint slide, but what we do is we take the market survey data for those benchmark positions, the seventy-two that we utilized in the overall analysis, as well as the job evaluation factors using the SAFE system. And we draw a regression analysis, which gives us the outline of the overall compensation plan that we'll be sharing with you tonight. And so the dark line in the middle would be what you would call predicted pay, shall we say. That is where a position, based on the lineup of the market and the evaluation, that is where a position's compensation level should be, if it were an exact match for the market. But not all positions are an exact match, so you're going to see the little dots, which are the benchmark positions. They're going to fall either on or a little bit on either side of the line. But that's what we use to develop the overall compensation system. So when we looked at developing the compensation plan, there are three scales that you will see in the final report. They're in appendices three and four. There's one for your general government employees. And that compensation plan has thirty-five pay grades with a five percent separation between grades. And so employees, positions are assigned within those thirty-five pay grades. The fire compensation plan has seven pay grades and the police has three pay grades. And those are for your line staff. That's not your, that's not your your leaders in those groups. That's your line staff. And so the pay grades were developed using the market survey data to ensure that the starting pay, the midpoint pay and the maximum pay are in line with the market. So that enables you to recruit employees that meet the qualifications that the city is asking for and it allows you to sustain those wages and be competitive with the market up towards the top rate as well. So each grade is an open range, which has a identified minimum, midpoint and maximum. This allows you flexibility, not only in the hiring rate of employees that you're bringing into the organization, it also provides flexibility to move employees based on individual employee performance, based on current financial resources that you have available to you for making adjustments to employee wages. And as I said, those, the pay plans and where positions are identified are listed in appendices three and four of the report. It's too much information to show on a PowerPoint slide. So then we looked at, okay, here's our pay plan. We have positions assigned. Now what impact does it have on individual employees? So we looked at various means to implement the recommendations of the study. And so there are three implementation options that are outlined in the report. Option one is simply moving those employees whose current wage falls below the minimum of the range to which their position has been assigned and moves them to that minimum rate. So just doing initial implementation, kind of at a bare minimum of the study. The annual cost to move employees to that minimum is just under five hundred ninety-seven thousand. So that's just moving to minimum. Option two is to provide a two percent increase to employees who have a wage which falls within the range. And this is to all employees, not taking into consideration years of service, et cetera. And the annual cost to provide that two percent increase is just hundred, nine hundred seventy-eight thousand. And then option three, we wanted to take into consideration employees' tenure in their positions with Lake Havasu City. And the goal of this is to move employees away from the minimum of the range to try and eliminate compression. And that compression amongst the ranks of staff, but also compression with newly hired employees in comparison to employees that have been with the city for a longer period of time. So to move them away from that minimum wage rate. And so what we did with that is we did a half a percent per year of service in position. But we didn't want any employees to have less than a one percent. So the default is a one percent minimum increase for employees unless that was going to bring them above the maximum. And then that would be lower. And so the cost, the annual cost of doing that is one point two five six million. And this is just wages. This doesn't take into consideration any, any benefits or of any sort. And so the details of these options are on pages eleven and twelve of the final report. So recommendations that we're bringing to you this evening is to approve the proposed salary schedule that was developed as a part of this study, approve the position placement, which aligns positions both internally and relative to market, improve an implementation option, which meets the goals of the city, but which also falls within the availability of financial resources that the city has. And then provide support for ongoing administration, which means guidelines for base adjustments, adjusting pay ranges and wages of employees. And so kind of as conclusions, what we looked at is, for conducting this study, is developing a system that would provide fair and equitable compensation to employees in a competitive and changing labor market, realizing that Lake Havasu City, you do have challenges with staffing positions just because where you're located, you're not a part of a larger metropolitan area. Employees have to come there to be able to work. Commuting is a little bit difficult. Identifying a compensation plan that addresses both internal equity and external market competitiveness, a market position that's fiscally responsible with public resources that are available to pay employee wages and benefits. And then ensuring that there's consistent administration of policies. of, of policies and procedures across all city departments. And so with that, I will pause and open it up for any questions that anyone may have.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that presentation. I'm sure there's going to be several questions. I'll start with, with one. You start, you mentioned there was 35 pay grades in general government operations, and then three in police and seven in fire. Is that, is that what the equivalent to steps would be now? Or is that, is that different?
No, those are, those are, no, there's no steps. The grades are going from grade one up to grade 35, and so positions based on their level of responsibility and their job requirements are placed in different grades based on those level of responsibilities. And then within the grade, it's an open range, and they would move through the range within the grade which their position has been assigned. There are no set steps, it's, it's all an open range system to provide more flexibility to the city.
Mr. Mayor, if you look on appendix three, I know, I apologize for giving the report so late, but appendix three will show those 35 grades.
So it's not based on person, it's position? So if there's a position that I do this job, that, that somehow is predetermined to be a grade of whatever, and then I move within that, that range? That's how that goes?
Correct.
Until I get promoted?
Correct.
Or move to a different job? Okay.
Correct.
All right, that was my initial question. Any other members of the council have questions?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Grohl.
On Slide eight, you were using a very powerful tool, a regression analysis, which allows you to narrow in on a variety of things, using the influence of different independent variables on a dependent variable. I was just wondering, I think I understand what you were doing there, but could you explain briefly how you were working that?
Yeah, this is, this is a linear regression analysis. And what it takes into consideration is the benchmark positions that were used in the survey, so the 73 positions that we actually used the data for in the survey, and those positions are listed in appendix two of the report. And so it takes those positions and what is the midpoint of the survey data, and then it takes into consideration down here what their safe job evaluation point. So using the nine factors of the SAFE job evaluation system, each position has a total point value. And so this takes the points of the position and the midpoint of the market data, and it draws a regression, a linear regression analysis that gives us the outline of the compensation plan.
Thank you, excellent work. I just wanted to make sure I was on the right track with you.
Okay, thank you.
And then on the 10 comparable cities, you had mentioned only eight provided data. I missed the two that did not.
That was Goodyear and Prescott.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for any of the members of the council? All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing then, and then we can hear what the public has to say, and then we can come back and, and ask any final questions and get final direction from Jess on implementation and/or Sean. So this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Yes, just make your way to the microphone, state your name for the record.
Hello, is it on?
It is.
Hello, Nancy Campbell. Hello, Mayor, council, and staff. Just to confirm, were we off by approximately 2.8 million per year? Is that what she was saying?
I didn't hear that, and is that?
It's the hundred and, it's the 1.256.
The implementation?
Yes.
It, it depends on which option you look at.
Okay, so those are three individual options.
If you're looking at, the, the numbers are up at the screen. So employees below minimum was 597,000, a 2% across-the-board increase, as well as the movement minimum is 978, and then a little over 1.2 million if we look at movement based on years of service.
Thank you very much, you answered my question.
Yeah. Excellent, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter? Mr. Fuller, if you just want to state your name for the record?
Yeah, Michael Fuller. Not really a statement, more of, I guess, questions myself. Two cities that didn't provide data, is that a concern as far as the overall numbers? Did that affect, you know, what, what the number should have been? Goodyear's a pretty high-paying agency. And how do employees, if you got a salary range, how are employees going to move through that salary range? And then half a percent per year on years of service for the option three, what does that actually mean to the employee as far as gathering what it is that they're going to, their salary is going to end up being? That's just a little confusing to me, I can't quite figure out what that means. Other than that, I don't really have a statement, just questions.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and are you able to answer those questions?
Yes, and we did have, even with missing the two organizations, we did have a very good representative sampling of, of wages, and typically if you add one back in, it's not going to change the numbers by very much. It's going to be marginal changes if you have one more response or two more responses. So we felt very comfortable with the data. Yes, it would have been nice to have those two in there, but we were just unable to collect that information. And so, yeah, we're comfortable with that. The 0.5% per year of service with that one, so if somebody had been in their position for four years, that would equate to a 2% increase. If somebody had been there for six years, it would equate to a 3% increase, unless they were in a position where their wage was below the minimum, and then some were getting a more significant increase than that in some instances, depending on what their current wage was in relationship to the market, because some positions were further off-market than others. And then for the open range, what we've talked about for pay philosophy is for employees to move through that range based on cost of living that's available and based on individual employee performance. And so those are the components that employees will, will move through the range to which their position has been assigned.
Thank you. And then I might just add that the comparable cities, as you know, are very important to the overall pay philosophy going forward when we go and check in and see where everyone's at. So those 10 comparables, in two years or three years, we go check the status, it's good to have all 10 of those there. And all the comparables we have now, or in our current system, are always referred to for various things, so. Does that answer your questions, Mr. Fuller? Okay. All right, we still are at the call to the public. Would anyone else like to address city council on this matter? Yeah, Cameron?
Yeah, thank you. Cameron Moses, I just was wondering why those cities were chosen and how do they compare to us from a cost of living standpoint?
Yeah, great question. Mr. Knutson, you want to take that?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. So the cities that were identified, we looked, we started off with, without, so we started off by trying to identify the market for, for Lake Havasu City. So what cities are similar in size? What cities have a similar budget? What cities deliver the same types of services? Now, we have an airport and other services that not all cities do, so we're going to make sure that, that we have cities that provide similar types of services. And then we also wanted to take a real close look at cities, some of those cities that have a tourist-based community that provide services. So we talk about, Lake Havasu City's roughly 55,000 people, but on a weekend, we think we could get 10, 15, 20-plus thousand people that come into town. So then, then our employees are providing services to a much, much higher population than 55,000. So budget, population, tourism, and types of services that these communities provide was, was the determination.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, some communities, like our neighbors at Bullhead City, for example, have a fire district, so it's a completely separate governing body, and, and they're paid outside, they're not actually city employees or manage the city. So you want to find cities that have similar populations and, and offer those same services. So that kind of just shows like in our own backyard, some differences that, that we may have. Any other questions or comments from the public? We did not receive any public comments via email. Again, receiving those at cityclerk@lhcaz.gov. And for item 8.5, we did not receive anything. Do the council have any other questions or thoughts?
No, Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes?
So the report doesn't really give us a recommendation to replace our current step system, does it? It's just, I see it on page 12, it talks about ongoing administration, what we could do based on CPI, but it doesn't really give us another alternative. I thought that's what the position analysis was also going to do, is give us a guideline. I know this brings us up to the levels we should be at, and it adjusts the, you know, 0.5% for, you know, the years, but it doesn't really seem to give us any what's next scenario. It sounds like it just kind of leaves it up to us and briefly what we could do, I guess. Can I get a little more information on that if I could?
Well, the, the pay plan in appendix three of the report is to replace your current compensation structure. So this is adopting a whole new compensation structure for all positions within Lake Havasu City. So in appendix three, those are the compensation structures. The first one is for your general government employees, and then the fire, and then the police salary ranges, and then in appendix four is where positions would be assigned within those pay structures. So this would replace the city's current system.
Mayor, Councilmember Dolan, so what we've identified here in terms of the, the implementation, so, and so we identified what the market is, and then we've identified where we need to go in terms of the placement of the, the employees in the new range. And that's why we talk about the half a percent per years of service, if, and then depending upon the, the movement of that employee, if they fall on the new range, and sometimes there's, as Mr. and Ms. Sorenson talked about, the fact that there might be a big jump to the, the beginning of the, of that range. So once that's identified, we have implementation, a new wage, then we have to talk about July 1st of 2021, because remember the step increases or any, any increases for annual raises for the employees were suspended as part of this effort to move, move the position analysis forward. So then on July 1st, next year, we start talking about that pay philosophy. So now we have employees placed within the new ranges, how are, how do employees move through those ranges over the course of time? And what will be identified within the report itself is the movement of an open range philosophy. So every year, every year, we'll identify what that percentage is for the, for the employees, and then that, and then we, what we need to do is identify something that's consistent from a year-to-year basis, which then identifies something similar that we saw with, within the step, step plan. That'd be my, my recommendation. Sometimes, though, we'll have to come back and we, we, we see times like 2008, 2010, and Great Recession, and so forth, would allow us to not, not forego step increases, but maybe do a smaller, a smaller percentage. But that allows more of a flexibility through, throughout the, throughout those ranges. Now, if you look at, from a step plan system and Havasu's step system, we identified, we had two tiers. We had a 3.8% increase was, and then for, for seniority within, within the rank of positions within the city, was a 4.6% increase. So that, that, that gives you kind of a comparison from steps to what a quorum it would be, or an open range system, as you're identifying a percentage, you're still moving through the range based on a percentage that, that's identified ultimately by the council when it comes down to the adoption of the budget. Does that help? I know there's a lot of thing, and there's a lot of ways to look at it in terms of implementation, the ranges, placing the employees on the range with, with the years of service, and then, then we start talking about, the following year, we start talking about pay philosophy. And then so right now, that pay philosophy that Ann talked about was, was twofold. One, the open range system, and then a performance system or component tied to it. We're not talking about a merit system that's been described previously, but trying to introduce something that still identifies employees within the organization that, that meet the characteristics that the city takes pride in. So we can identify a few things with our, our team culture that we're working on, creating right now, and through that, through that process, some characteristics. And if we can identify some employees that, that meet those, those characteristics that we, that we take pride in, then there'll be a pay component tied to that in, in some form or fashion, but be outside of any type of a merit system.
And just to follow up, I know a few meetings ago, we gave direction to staff, and I believe yourself, to implement the changes as soon as available, as of either July 1st, August 1st, September 1st, whenever it works with Oracle and everything. Which plan did we, did we, we agreed to option three in that process? Or just to make sure, what, I guess, what, how, what, the decision we made months ago, how does it fit into these options that we're now seeing in the report?
Yeah, I think you see here, there's three, Mayor, Councilmember Dolan, I think there's three options in the report itself, right? And we identified the one, I think it's called option three, it's for 1.256 million dollar, which identifies for the 0.5% per year of service. We looked at a 0.5%, we looked at a 0.33%, we looked at a 0.25%, and we needed to find some type of differentiation between years of service for employees. So we're, we're talking about half a percent, so that's two years of service equals 1%. And I think at that point, that was a number that, that, that made sense in terms of the distance between employees based on, based on, on where they at in the scale right now. That first option that, that, and talked about was just bringing everybody to the minimum. So employees that have been working for the city for, for three years, might be making the exact same amount of money on the new range as an employee working here for 15, 20 years. So it was important to have the differentiation. Long answer, short answer is option three, the 1.256 million. Now, that, that is a cost that's just for salary and wages. Additional cost comes with overtime, with retirement, and with a handful of other, other, other costs that are tied to that. Workman's comp.
Yeah, when we embarked on this, this whole plan, if we don't do option three, it really doesn't matter, then we didn't achieve the goal, because it was all about compaction, was what our, that's what started the whole conversation. So if we don't have some sort of system to deal with that, then we might as well stick with what we have and, and move people through that. But this allows that, that flexibility. You know, this, this is much more complex than is in the private sector, so it's, it takes a minute to actually work through it, but.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Grohl?
I'd like to offer that I think the work that's been done is, is excellent, and you make a very valid point, which is option three is the one that allows us to solve for compaction, as well as moving people to where they should be in the pay scale. And so I think that's, we've kicked the can down the road on this for so many years. I think it's time for us to act and to do the right thing for our people.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Grohl. All right, Danny, so this item that we're discussing, there is no action of the council, it's an update. Can you, can you hear me all right? Yeah. Sorry, we're in an echo chamber with these, so it's hard to always tell. But there is no action on it, it's more for informational, for the council to answer any question, or ask any questions, kind of understand it. Obviously, with getting the report late, I'm sure we'll have some additional questions, so as this is all being digested, we can bring back a future agenda item if necessary for, for updates for, for council. But Mr. Knutson, I don't know if you would like to address this, or if you can talk about staff education, so how are we going to educate the team, that this is going to impact, what's your targeted implementation date, and some of those pieces, that would be helpful.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As far as the, the staff education piece that Ms. Arula sent out an email this afternoon, includes a copy of the report and some just general conversation, so that is now at a point where we feel really confident. We don't want to release information that was subject to change or so forth and so on, so we feel real confident in terms of the option, and confident in terms of what those numbers indicate. So we're at that point now where the report is able to be released to the, to the, to the public, to the council, and to the employees. And then in the next couple of weeks, Ms. Arula will be sending out another update to the employees, which will identify a little bit more of the detail, and some of the things we talked about today, including the pay philosophy for, for next year and those types of things, and explaining difference between an open range system and a, and a step system and those types of things. And then as we get towards the end of, end of August, there'll be, in the beginning of September, in that timeframe, will be an email that actually, that goes out to each individual employee that, that explains their, their, their personal circumstance. So as, as an individual, based on their position, years of service, and how, position analysis, and how this, this study will impact them individually. And remember that there's going to be all over the board, there's some, some, some employees that have been paid under market, and so they're going to see a, a jump in wage. And you're going to see employees that have been paid at market, they're going to see an adjustment, that, that's, that would be a much smaller comparison. So we identified a minimum of 1%, and that's something that we wanted to identify mostly for the, the employees who are hired right now, in this fiscal year, or recently in the last, in the last. the last, in the last couple of months, because they came on board with something that, something in mind, but that 1% will allow for that. So keep that in mind, the employees will get an individual notification that says, here's a personal situation, some will receive more, some will receive less. It's not based at that point on the, the person, but we identified positions based on market and now placing that, years of service in that, in that range. And then as far as implementation, we, no further council action is needed, the implementation will, will, will take place the first part of September. That, that is our goal, and remains our goal, and we're on, on track for that goal. Ms. Olson presented a contract from Comtra earlier today, and alluded to the fact that at the next council meeting, there'll be another contract for Comtra coming at the next council meeting. Now, that's gonna be the, the direction that I'm going, unless told otherwise here, is that contract will be for ratification. So, so we need that contract to be signed by Comtra to help us on the backend and make sure payroll is able to have the software and tools to, to get this, get this completed. So that'd be, I believe, Jill Yellem, if it's not $18,000, but I think that, that ratification for that Comtra contract will be, and she's nodding, $18,000 at the next council meeting. So with all that, we're meeting, meeting very regularly and doing our best to put everything into place to get it done as, as indicated earlier.
Excellent, thank you.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
I mentioned years of service, of course, with the city, the employees we already have. If we hire, you know, police or fire, or somebody from another department, another city, do those years of service, will they also come in at that, you know, if they have 10 years of service, will they come in at that 10-year of service range, so we can also be competitive when hiring, you know?
So not, not quite, so this is, but, but close, but there is some, there's an important component tied to that. One, before I start that, two, it's years of service in that position for that employee as opposed to within the organization itself. So for that position. But the, with an open range system as opposed to a step system, what you indicated a situation that actually is gonna assist us greatly. So we have a range, and you have an employee that's coming to work for the city. Most employees that have a limited amount of experience or, or that don't have the years of service for that particular position, will come in at the beginning of that, that range. But if we have, say, an officer that's worked five or 10 years in another organization, have a lateral that's coming to, to the city, we have the ability to negotiate a wage with that employee that, that puts them within, within the range. Previously, we had 10 steps and had to be one of those steps. With an open range, we're able to identify a, a specific dollar anywhere on that range for, for just that. And sometimes to attract highly experienced and, and employees for all positions across the board, that's, that's what we do.
Any, any additional questions from council? Any final comments from the public? All right, we'll close the public hearing, and with no additional questions from council or comments, then we will look forward to the implementation, digesting this information, again, bring it back for a future discussion item, should that, that need arise for, for Lake Havasu City. So thank you very much. I'd like to thank one, all of the city staff that has been working on this for 24 months. I know every member of the staff has had to do a part of this. Sean, thank you to your office for all of your hard work and efforts, to Jill, your office, to make sure that it actually gets implemented in people's paychecks. And, and your team, thank you so much for, for making this happen. And we look forward to hearing more. All right, I made an error when we were talking about item 8.3, which was Adopt Ordinance Number 20-1237, Amending Lake Havasu City Code Title 14, Zoning Development Code Section 14.03.03C, 17C3, Medical Marijuana Business Operation to Revise allowable hours of operation. I believe I misread, we did get a public comment via email, Ms. Williams, is that correct?
I, I do not have a public comment.
Oh, perfect, okay. Here I am, I'm fretting this whole time that I made a, a mistake. So I, all right, perfect, so we do not need to go backwards. Thank you. We'll then move on to item nine, which is our current events. Are there any current council committee reports? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to... To the final call to the public. Would anyone like to address the city council at the final call to the public? Seeing none in person, we'll close the, the public hearing. We also did not receive any comments from email at cityclerk@lhcaz.gov. Item 11 is future meetings. Our next meeting is Tuesday, August 25th, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. We also have a regular meeting on Tuesday, September 8th, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. Item 12, are there any future discussion items from any members of the council? Seeing none. Item 13, motion to adjourn. So moved. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane, a second from Councilmember McCoy. We are adjourned, be kind, thank you for being here.